Welcome. Everyone to today's Town of Chatham zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is August 24, 2023. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham CBA is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, and then you put in the ID number for the conference, which is 954-377-30, and then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this hybrid form of meeting, we'll have a roll call of all members. Please state your name and whether you agree or not.
Virginia Fenwick, I agree.
Lee Hovey, I agree.
Paul C. Simple, I agree.
Randy Podash, I agree.
And I'm David S. Nixon. I agree. I would ask that any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone, please give us your last name and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. I'll go quickly through how the hearing is conducted. We start with the notice read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah B. Clark. She's the PPO for the town, Principal Permitting Officer. We would then have a presentation either by the applicant or their representative. When they are done, we would ask for anyone either here or on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor to do so. I would then read any and all correspondence we had received. We would then ask for anybody who wishes to speak either against or has a question about the appeal to join the meeting and ask. Following that, there could be some rebuttal. Then we would have board members asking their questions to anyone present. When that's done, we would close the public hearing and go into deliberations. Deliberations is not an open forum as far as discussion goes. It's strictly among us. We would deliberate and vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To be successful, you must get a supermajority. In our case, there are five voters, and so you've got to get four. Are there any questions? We will start, well, we'll start with the, all right.
Would you like to start with the minutes of July 27, 2023? I'll move to adopt those minutes as amended.
Second.
Need a roll call? Jenny?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then we will go on to Sarah. Let's see. Let's go on to 23-072, please.
Application number 23-072, Casa Investments Inc., care of Stephen Venacasa, PO Box 1205, Westboro, Mass. 01581. Owner of property located at 322 and 324 Bridge Street. Also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 16B Block 13, Lot 4A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change three non-conforming structures on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling, guest house, and shed, and the construction of a new dwelling, guest house, and garage. The existing dwelling at 322 Bridge Street is non-conforming and is located 15.6 feet from the road, 24.9 feet from the Westerly Abutter, and has a building height of 30.5 feet. The existing guest house at 324 Bridge Street is non-conforming, and it is located 15.1 feet from the Westerly Abutter and exceeds the floor area allowed for a guest house by 20 square feet, 50.8 percent. The existing shed is non-conforming, and it is located 6.9 feet from the Westerly Abutter. The proposed dwelling at 322 Bridge Street will be non-conforming, and it will be located 15.6 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required, and 13.4 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed guest house at 324 Bridge Street will be non-conforming, and it will be located 15.7 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed garage will be non-conforming, and it will be located 18.1 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,583 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,606 square feet, or 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and it contains 23,724 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
On Monday, August 24, Sarah received the following. "I want to withdraw my application of 322 and 324 Bridge Street without prejudice for the zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled this Thursday, August 24, 2023. Thank you, Stephen Venacasa." Any discussion?
I'll move to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
You need a vote on that, Jenny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's your unanimous decision. Okay. Okay, Sarah, 23-047 and 23-048, please.
Application number 23-047, Town of Chatham, 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 85 Mill Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15C Block 0, Lot 85. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from the required road setback and building height for the construction of a public utility building. The proposed wastewater pump station will be 20.33 feet tall, where 20 feet is the maximum allowed, and will be located 7.4 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The property is located within the R-40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 8d2c of the protective bylaw. Application number 23-048, Town of Chatham, 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 85 Mill Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15C Block 0, Lot 85. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from the required road setback and building height for the construction of a public utility building. The proposed wastewater pump station will be 20.33 feet tall, where 20 feet is the maximum allowed, and will be located 7.4 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The property is located within the R-40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 8d2c of the protective bylaw. Application number 23-048, Town of Chatham, 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 85 Mill Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15C Block 0, Lot 85. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct a public utility facility, wastewater pump station, as allowed by special permit under Section 3C 1C7 of the bylaw. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 9, and Section 8d2b of the protective bylaw.
Do we have anybody who would like to present this? Well, we have two people. All right. Please identify yourselves, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Failey. I'm the Public Works Director for Chatham.
And my name is Jeff Gregg from GHD. I am the consultant to the Town of Chatham.
So I'd like to just give a brief overview. This variance is to replace an existing pump station. The existing pump station is over 50 years old. The replacement is for the greater public good. It will add a generator, which will allow it to function during power outages. Currently, it puts a strain on staff for both health and safety issues. And really, I'd like to kick it off to Jeff for any technical presentation as part of this.
And so this project is not only an upgrade for the existing pumping station, but it's also serving the greater implementation for the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, which is for nutrient management. So Dr. Duncanson would usually get up here and talk about some of the work that we've been doing over the number of years to address nitrogen TMDLs. So this is also integral to that work. So it's both to address this need of age and improvement and also for the TMDLs. I don't know if you prefer if I start on the variance topics or the special permit.
Your choice.
Okay. So in terms of the variance topics, with the soils, topography, shape, this is a pre-existing pumping station. It is a, for lack of a better term, postage stamp site that the town already had a facility on. It is basically at elevation three, so current base flood elevation in the area is 12. So part of this project is to address flood concerns, and hence the reason why the building needed to be higher so that we could actually flood-proof the electrical room, which is housing the generator, which this facility doesn't currently have. And so it's surrounded by wetlands, as you know, and it's got the pond that's right in front of it as well. So we're trying to manage the upgrade of this facility while essentially holding the eastern and southern bounds of where the existing station is, and we're kind of building into the hill behind, to the property behind. It's, as Mr. Failey indicated, it is a structure that's deeply in need of an upgrade. It was built in 1969, I believe, or 1970. It is an antiquated technology that requires constant maintenance, and they actually don't even make the parts to service the major components of the station. So this would be to address that in terms of the hardship, the loss of this facility. There are existing homeowners and properties that are already connected to this facility and using it for sewer collection to discharge to the wastewater treatment facility. So the loss of this facility is critical to the town's infrastructure. And if you had to change out that technology or change out the whole collection system, you'd be disturbing all of that. You'd have to basically redo that whole area. And then in terms of providing the public service, I think that's kind of covered in some of those, and we're hoping that the, basically the variance on the four inches of additional height, and then the fact that it's already a pre-existing station that is already, I would say, non-conforming to all the setbacks right now, we're hoping that we can get this variance for that piece. Should I go into the second set? Okay. So in terms of the special permit, in terms of adequacy of the site, it is a site that does exist, and it's certainly serving that purpose right now for wastewater collection to be brought to the treatment facility. So that use isn't changing at all. It's suitable for this application. It is small, but it will serve the purpose, and we can address through what we designed, address the flood concerns and the like. There will be a, for lack of a better term, traffic impact during construction because Mill Pond Road is narrow, but there are access through Homestead and Mill Pond, so if this is at the corner, and so it shouldn't, you know, we can manage getting people in and out. The town has a moratorium on sewer work during the summer, so from May, from Memorial Day to, I believe, September 15th is a restriction we have already. So although the site will be restricted because the contractor will have potentially been set up, but they won't be doing any major outside work. They may be doing work inside the station that wouldn't disrupt, you know, the use of access through there, but they wouldn't be able to do any major site work or anything like that.
Traffic flow will be restored to its existing condition once construction is over.
Yes. So, yeah, I apologize. So from this image here, you can see that it's, that's basically being built on where the station is now, and that doesn't encroach on the road anymore than it already did. We're just going to have stairs there and an added guardrail. And then views and vistas, we have to rate, we have to be above flood elevation in order to, you know, get federal funding and our state funding and in order to protect the facilities for use during those conditions. So we tried to keep this as low as possible with the understanding that the neighbor behind would also want to see over this and not be obstructed. So we did that. And we also are going to be, there's a telephone pole that exists on the corner of the property right now that would be actually removed as part of this upgrade. So all that, all those utilities would be underground from another pole. It's already served by all the utilities, so it would continue to be served by those and actually serve as a utility. So in terms of the adequacy of utilities, noise and litter during construction, obviously there's the noise that you would have related to construction. The contractors are required to follow the town's noise ordinance in terms of work before and after, and only under, you know, special conditions with the approval of the town would they work outside of those hours. And then after the facility is constructed, it's actually not going to make a whole lot of noise, and it shouldn't be generating any litter. As the operators reminded us that when you have a power outage right now, they actually have to bring down a generator, a portable generator to run the air compressor, which runs 24/7, it would be much louder than this because it's outside of, outside the building. This will have to exercise weekly, 20 to 30 minutes a day, and that is usually in the middle of the week and in the middle of the day, but that time can be adjusted based on input from, you know, the town when they want to do that. But that's when they typically run those. And certainly during a power outage, everybody's running, everyone else that has a generator is running their generator as well, so.
Currently, during a power outage, we have to drive either, like Jeff said, hook up a portable generator compressor, or drive the vector truck down and have that engine running to pump out the pumping station.
Compatibility with pre-existing use, it's the same, it's the same use of the site as it exists right now. We're just upgrading the technology that's serving as the collection system. Impact on the natural environment, as I stated before, this project is also part of the whole town's efforts to address total nitrogen, total maximum daily loads of nitrogen that are causing eutrophication in your coastal embainments, including Mill Pond. So part of this whole effort and the effort of essentially sewer-ing the town is all tied together. And we're going to be restoring the wetland side that gets disturbed as they're doing the work, but we're not expanding the footprint in the direction, in the two directions of the wetland. Impact to the neighborhood, we're trying, as we showed before, trying to blend with the aesthetic views of Chatham. It's a cedar shingle-style hardy plank on the outside, asphalt shingle roof. We actually put a very low pitch on it to, in order to keep the height down as much as we could. We've actually gone and we're proposing, it's the stone face facade to give it a more of a, a little more like seawall-ish kind of look as opposed to just solid concrete. So it's actually going to have a, like a rock face. This is a general depiction. It won't look exactly like this, but this is the general style of what it's going to look like so that it would have the least amount of visual impact. And I think, I think I covered all the items, but if I missed any, please let me know.
Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in support?
Support.
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 Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in support of this application?
Mr. Knight, did you want to speak in support?
No, I just had a couple of questions.
Okay, the questions section comes a little later.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting for. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Then there's no one to speak in support.
Okay, then I'll read the correspondence. The first is from Giorgio. She's the health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes on August 22. "I have no concerns or comments." And then we have a note from Nicole Smith. She's a conservation agent for the town. She writes on August 23. "The Conservation Commission approved and issued an order of conditions for the 85 Mill Pond Road on May 16, 2023. The order has not yet been recorded. There is a condition that a planting plan be submitted, whether that planting occurs on-site, if there is room, or at a different but equally environmentally appropriate location." That's the extent of the correspondence. And so now I would ask for anybody in the audience or here who has specific questions or wishes to speak against it, please indicate you would like to join the conversation.
Tim Knight would like to speak.
Hi.
Tim Knight would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Tim Knight, and I'm with my spouse, Maureen. We just bought our house at 81 Mill Pond two months ago, and we're aware of everything. We met with Rob the other day, and we had a nice meeting also with the abutter, Mr. Brooks. And we just had just a couple of questions on the siding. Is it going to be a shingle-like material? I'm sure it's going to be more, I don't know if it's wood or is it like a hardy plank material? And it looks like it's in the gray family, which looks like that would kind of blend in nicely with the neighborhood. And also, our other concern was with the removal of some of those trees. I know they've been there for numerous years, and it's kind of a nice buffer for the whole neighborhood with the character. And I just wanted to confirm if I was correct in understanding that they're going to replace them with a native species tree. I'm not sure what type, but I think the minimum was going to be 12 feet. We just wanted a little more clarity on that. And, you know, we're very happy there, and we, I know these are difficult decisions, and I know it's going to be a big improvement, and thank you for your attention to this matter.
Okay, before you answer Mr. Knight's question, let's see what other questions we have.
I see no one else with questions.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Mr. Knight's question?
Yes. So the shingles are going to be a hardy plank in the style of Cedar Shake. So the town had made the decision that they would like the hardy plank style. Yes, so the shingles are going to be a hardy plank in the style of Cedar Shake. So the town had made the decision that they would like the hardy plank style, but still to look like cedar siding. So all of it is cedar shingle style with the hardy plank. The color is going to be sort of the grayish to look like weathered cedar shingle as, as best we can. We have other facilities around town that have that same style. And then in terms of the trees, we're trying to protect as many of the trees on that corner as we can, and we are going to, as part of our agreement with the abutter, have to work through just some of the landscape planting locations and placements to satisfy, you know, the appropriate screening of that area. So that, that is our intent.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Only if you go to the microphone. You can't ask it from there. So just identify yourself.
Huh?
Identify yourself.
I'm Mary Ann Asper.
Okay.
Are we going to lose any parking spaces down at the dock? Because as it is, there's only five or six of them, and I actually got a ticket, a $50 ticket, for parking that far from the sign.
I think the gentleman would have to answer that question.
I am not sure where the official parking spaces are. The town needs access for the wastewater treatment facility, like, so I know there's restriction there, we're not changing anything in front of the station in terms of space, but the stairs are going to be right next to it. I don't know that I, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the base, the, the water facing face of the base of the, of the stone wall will not change, that is going to remain the same. The only projection is the stairs, but there's really not any viable parking where the stairs are proposed. And the expansion is on to an adjacent property where we have, working on an agreement with them. So really, there's no other impacts to the parking from what's existing now.
But isn't there a second set of stairs? Because the, the existing ones are here, is there another one?
Have to move closer to the mic.
Is there another one that's coming out this way that we won't be able to park at?
If we can go to that image of the proposal?
I think there's one of the, I think there's one of the existing location. So that's, that's the existing.
Can I go up there?
Sure.
This is, but when?
No, you cannot talk, please. You can take a pointer, but you can't talk.
They want you to speak through the microphone, so.
Sorry.
It's all right.
The existing stairs, you can park on the left and the right of them. The new stairs. How do I do that? So you're not going to be able to park there, is that correct?
Well, we will need pedestrian access to access the stairs. We haven't really laid out the exact footprint of where, because the parking isn't really defined now, it's more of a, a free-for-all. So we haven't really defined exactly where the parking or parking restrictions would be. I would imagine we would paint a small crosshatch area to prevent people from parking there so we can get in to, so workers can get in and, and work on the, on this pumping station.
Okay.
I, I think if, if you look at this edge, and then if you go back a slide, or forward a slide, that's the same edge. So the stairs end essentially at the grass. The, the issue is, is that if people are parking in front of the pumping station and there's a pumping station failure, they're going to have to be towed to be moved to access the station would be my, I mean, I would imagine the operators need to be able to operate the station. So I, I'm not the, we just tried to keep our footprint as best we could, and if you go to the next slide, we did end up putting a, you know, a guardrail because there are no stairs on this side, it's just the front face of this, of the station. So technically, we haven't reduced any of the paved area in front of and around the station, but it'll be for the town, I guess, to decide on your actual parking requirements at that location.
There will be a less likely chance a car will be towed with the new pumping station because we'll have the generator backup onsite, we won't have to bring something in offsite to hook up.
Okay, all right.
There was other hands on the back. Anybody here wish to speak? Okay, more people online, sir?
I don't believe there's anyone else on teams that wishes to speak.
Okay, so now we'll have questions from the board. Randy?
Oh, thank you for your presentation, very good. Dr. Bob would be proud of you.
That's high praise.
So am I correct in, in my, interpreting what you said, is that you have to go up in height a little for FEMA?
Yes, so because flood elevation, base flood elevation is elevation 12, and current grade right in front of the station is about elevation three or four, so we have to raise up that, and then the requirements for funding through the state revolving fund and the, basically an executive order from the federal government on these types of facilities that they're funding through SRF programs, you have to have a minimum of three feet of elevation above that to protect your facility. So we had to do that creatively to keep the top of the building as low as we could by raising everything in the building up so that it's above elevation 15, where the landing is probably at elevation, I think, 13 or 14 of that upper deck. If we raised everything up, so we flood-proofed the room, but we have to keep louvers and other penetrations besides the door above that flood elevation, and the door has some flood protection to, to protect. So if we lowered it anymore, then we would be impacting things on the inside, and they wouldn't fit.
So when you say anymore, you mean anymore, so you picked the number that you need?
Yes.
Because you, because you know how variances are, so you need it, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
We, we even lowered the, the second floor elevation and put the generator mounted on a pedestal inside above the second floor elevation, just to keep it out of that flood zone, but to still minimize the height of the second floor.
Thank you.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Lee?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
I have one. Why keep it there? Why not move it? I mean, it's, it's a, it's a very busy spot as far as the, the dock goes and all the rest of it, it's a very visual spot. So since it's been there for 50 years, gee, maybe it's time, isn't there a better spot?
You, okay, so the way wastewater collection works for that facility is it flows by gravity, and as you know, that's the low point in that location. If you move the station somewhere else, you wouldn't be able to serve all the people that are currently served by gravity. You would actually have to change the technology and actually put everyone on grinder pumps in order to serve that same area.
So if you move the station to the east, let's say 100 feet?
So then you're in the middle of the wetland that we weren't in before. So right now, we're already in a disturbed spot, so we're trying to stay out of the, the wetland. And then it would be probably even a more of a visual impact to the people that are, right now, don't have anything in front of them but the marsh. So that's the other reason why we're trying to keep it where it is, as opposed to moving it anywhere else.
But it could flood.
The area around, well, the area around it currently does actually flood, so that's why we're raising it up. It was raised up in 96, I think, somewhere around there, and that's why it kind of looks like a bunker right now, and it now needs to go up even further. And they were able to do that because they didn't change the technology, so they didn't need a generator. But that's the only place we can put the generator because we can't run power from somewhere else, and there's no publicly owned land to support that. So that's why it's designed the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'll move to close the hearing, you're moving to deliberations.
Second.
Need a vote on that, Jenny?
I agree, I vote yes. Yes.
Paul votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
I vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Paul?
Well, it's obviously a pretty unique location, and one which is vital to our functioning sewer system and all of the neighbors that are there. So I think that, I think that we're dealing with an area that needs to be continued to service and an area that's already been disturbed. I don't think, with all due respect, moving at 100 feet to the east would be a good idea. So I think it meets our criteria for variance, and I think it also meets our criteria for special permit, but we will take those separately.
Lee?
I agree with Paul, I think it meets our criteria for the variance and the special permit. I think it looks like a needed upgrade, a great upgrade, and anything we can do to support the sewer and wastewater management program is a good thing.
Jenny?
I agree, I think, well, first of all, very thoughtful approach to your presentation and to the design. It sounds like it's needed upgrades. You know, interestingly, so we have the three criteria that are required to meet all three, and usually relief without detriment to the public good is one of the harder ones to meet, and that actually seems to be the easiest one from what you've presented. So I agree with Paul, I think it meets the, the variance criteria and the special permit as well.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just add that based on your answer to the chair's question, it sounds like it would be a hardship for you to move it. And so with that and what everybody else said, I would support both the applications.
Okay.
Why don't we take 23-047, which would be the dimensional variance request? I'll move to approve that application as submitted. I don't think we need additional conditions, given the conditions that are on all of the sewer construction and the town's activity anyhow.
I agree.
So I'll move it without additional conditions.
Second.
Need a vote on that, Jenny?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's your unanimous vote.
And then I will go to 23-048, which is the request for a special permit. Again, as we indicated in our reasoning, I think that, questions that, I think this meets all of the criteria of the special permit. It's certainly not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I'll move to approve that application as submitted without conditions.
Second.
Need a vote?
I vote yes.
I vote yes, too.
Paul votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's your unanimous vote, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
No.
Oh, I'll give you the next one. How about 23-070, please?
Application number 23-070, 184 Barcliff LLC, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, 707 Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 184 Barcliff Avenue, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15G Block 20, Lot B1. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change in non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and detached garage and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 21.3 feet from the road. The existing garage is non-conforming, and it is located 4.1 feet from the west of Lea Butter and 16.2 feet from the north of Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and it will be located 23.1 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,503 square feet, 15.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,480 square feet, 14.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 9,917 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross representing Dan Russell, the property owner. Dan is here with me today in the blue shirt. The audience also participating is Dave Sargent, who's the architect for the project, and he's on Microsoft Teams this afternoon. I think you were all here back in June when we were with this property, presenting a different design. Took Dan and I a day or two to recover from the rejection at that meeting, but after we did recover, Dan reached out to Dave and I and said, you know, there were some very specific items that the board and, and some of the neighbors objected to in terms of the layout and the design and the massing. He said, so how can we work to make changes that are going to address those concerns? So that framework in mind, Dave and Dan went to work on crafting a new design that they think addresses those concerns, and we hope you do agree with that as we go through those today. Before starting on the criteria, I'd like to go through the, the concerns and the objections as we understood them at the last meeting and what we've done to try to address those items.
Good idea, okay.
Sarah, if you don't mind pulling up the site plan, I think it'll be easiest to explain the first item. So the prior version that you saw in June, we were going to relocate the driveway over here on the east side of the property adjacent to Mouse Hole Lane, the, and the garage that you see here now. And the neighbors on Mouse Hole Lane and several of the members had concerns objected to locating the driveway adjacent to Mouse Hole Lane as there was concerns relative to traffic and safety issues that could result with cars entering and exiting Mouse Hole Lane. So for the proposal that you see in front of you today, we've essentially flipped the house, the design. So the driveway and the garage are now on the west side of the property where it's currently located in the same general area. You see here, Dave Clark came up with this design, revised driveway design, to add an area over here, you can park some additional cars on, on the site, as well as servicing as an area where you can do a turnaround, so you don't have to pull out or back out onto Barcliff, but you can pull out facing forward. So we think by flipping the house and locating the driveway back on the west side, we've addressed the concerns relative to safety and vehicular access as relates to Mouse Hole Lane and the driveway. The second change is there was some concern from board members relative to the height. We weren't exactly at the maximum building height, but we're very close. So the new design is about two and a half feet lower than what we proposed to you back in June. There were questions during that hearing relative to the interior ceiling height. The, the proposed ceiling height and the interior at the last design, or the prior design, was nine feet. These are going to be closer to 8.3, 8.4, and so as a result, the ridge height overall is going to be about two and a half feet lower than what we proposed to you back in June. Additionally, there were some comments, concerns relative to the setback from Barcliff. The existing house is non-conforming at around 21 feet from Barcliff. We had proposed around 22 feet. This proposal in front of you today, it essentially pushes it back two feet. It's 24 feet here to the corner board, you see 23.1 is for, there's a roof overhang, but as it relates to the horizontal features on the building itself, it's really a 24-foot setback, so we pushed it back about two feet. Another concern raised by a butters was the pool. The building code only requires an automatic pool cover, but there were concerns relative that children might wander over and it could be a safety issue. So Dan is now proposing a pool fence and a cover, so we think we've addressed that concern. The last piece, there was concern The last piece, there was concern as the floor plans for the prior design showed a full bath in the basement, along with a den and a family room. And the thought was, well, that's just going to get used as a bedroom. You have a full bath down there. People are just going to use that as a fifth bedroom. This design, we still have finished basement, family room, rec room, and a den. It's just a half bath, a sink and a toilet, which we think is totally appropriate with use as a family room and a den in the basement, but no shower. So these were the changes that we made that we think were in response to the objections and criticisms and concerns that we received at the first hearing. One thing I'd like to point out before going into the criteria, and I think this is largely a result of a poor job by me in explaining the structure, the design. There seemed to be a sentiment from board members and article in the newspaper about we were building this really large structure, sort of a McMansion. And it's not a very large building. It's fourteen hundred and change square feet. It's a ten thousand square foot lot, a little bit less, and we actually meet the fifteen percent building coverage, which is pretty rare these days that you see that. I forgot to point out, the prior design that we were here, we matched the existing building coverage of fifteen point two. We have a very slight reduction. We're now fourteen point nine percent. So we do meet the coverage requirement under the bylaw. And so as I was saying, it's not an overly large structure. I understand there was comments about three thousand square feet of finished area. That includes the basement, excluding the basement. It's about twenty-four hundred square feet of what you can see a finished area. But both of those numbers, I think, are pretty consistent with numbers that you see, applications that I've filed myself, watching hearings in terms of new construction these days for finished space. I don't think those are out of the realm or lack comparable. They're certainly comparable with other designs that you routinely see in front of this board for new construction. And I'd also point out that we are currently over fifteen percent. And a lot of times you see applications, when you're over fifteen percent, people see that as a chance, we're going to go bigger, we're going to expand, because we can go higher than fifteen percent with a special permit. So Dan could have filed an application looking to go to seventeen, eighteen percent coverage and sought a special permit, but he didn't. He's trying to keep it at the fifteen percent, in this case, just below the fifteen percent. And I'd suggest you don't see a lot of that. I think most times if it's over fifteen percent, people try to get a little bit more. But in this case, Dan's actually going to be a little bit less in terms of total coverage, and we're going to be in compliance with the bylaw requirements. So with that, I'd like to move along to the criteria, if I may. The first criteria is adequacy of size of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. We believe the size of the site is adequate for the proposal. As I said, it's a small parcel, just under ten thousand square feet, but the proposed structure will meet the sideline and rear setbacks and will be in compliance with the building coverage requirement at fourteen point nine percent. It is located within the setback to Barcliff Avenue as the current building is, but it will be pulled slightly further away from the existing and from the prior proposal that you saw back in June. I'm going to go over some statistics with you or some numbers a little bit later in the criteria, but based on some research that Dave Clark's office was able to do, we think the height and the setback is in fact quite comparable with the properties, the immediate neighbors to this house. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Neighborhood is a mixture of homes of various sizes and ages. We believe the size is compatible with neighboring properties, and that the footprint and mass of the structure is also compatible with the lot and the neighborhood. The third is the extent of proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use. There really is no proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use. We are pulling, in fact, pulling it back from Barcliff Avenue, however, slightly, which is our only nonconformity. And this project is actually removing two existing nonconformities relative to the garage you see here in the northeast corner, which violates the setback to the west and to the north. Number four, suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or in the natural environment. We believe the site is suitable for the proposed demolition and rebuild. There will be no negative impact on neighboring properties or the environment caused by the proposed construction. During construction, this construction period, we believe all construction vehicles can be adequately located on site so as to avoid any issues with parking and traffic on Barcliff Avenue. Number five, impact of scale setting and mass on neighborhood visual character. I suggest there's no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. The height of the home will be increasing from the existing design, but the design and size of the dwelling is still in keeping with the characteristics of the neighborhood. The setback from Barcliff, as I mentioned, while remaining nonconforming, is still over twenty feet, twenty-three feet away and in line with setbacks for neighboring properties. There is also significant vegetated barrier along all three sidelines of the property that reduce the impact of any additional height. There is significant vegetation, Mouse Hole Lane, that you can see, these trees back in here that are quite tall, and there's a fair bit of vegetation here on the west side of the property as well. Sarah, if you don't mind going to the photographs that I sent, I just want to run through some of the neighboring properties. We took some photographs, and Dave Clark's office went out and obtained for us the building height, the ridge height of some of the neighboring properties and the setbacks, just for comparison's sakes. You sort of understand the height that we're proposing as relates to the neighboring properties. So this is the existing house that you see right here. Sarah, if you don't mind going to the next one, please. This is one seventy-two Barcliff, so this is on the other side of Mouse Hole Lane from Dan's property. That has a ridge height of eighty-six feet. It's a little hard to see from the angle. I had to take the picture. There's construction vehicles over here. But the setback from Barcliff for this property is nineteen point eight feet. So it's a bit closer to the road than our property. If you don't mind going to the next one, Sarah. This is one ninety-two Barcliff, so this is Dan's property on the west. This has a ridge height of ninety-two point four feet, which is about two and a half feet higher than our proposed ridge height, which is eighty-nine point nine. The setback for this, it's a little further back from Barcliff at thirty-one feet. But again, I think our height and setback is certainly comparable with this neighboring property. If you don't mind going to the next one, Sarah. This is one ninety-three Barcliff, a little tough to see through the trees, which are nicely vegetated there, but that has a ridge height of eighty-nine point five feet, which is essentially the same as ours, and has a setback of thirty-one feet. And then, Sarah, I'm going to have to have you flip through a few more for me, if you don't mind. Let's tell you when to stop. Couple more, sorry. That's, oops, sorry if you don't mind. That's one eighty-five Barcliff, so that's across the street from Dan's property. That has a ridge height of eighty-six feet and a setback of thirty-five feet. And then one more, please. This is two oh nine Barcliff, just down the street. This received a special permit a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, for a demo rebuild. This has a ridge height of eighty-seven point nine feet and a setback of just over thirty feet. And I think this is a good comparison to our property in terms of size, height, setback. It's actually a bit bigger. It's got lot coverage of closer to fifteen point eight percent. And so I think what Dan has designed is really in keeping with the height and setbacks of these properties in terms of maintaining the neighborhood visual character. Number six, compatibility of the proposed use for neighboring uses. Single-family dwelling in a single-family residential neighborhood, therefore compatible. Method of sewer disposal, source of water and drainage. Dan will be installing a new Title V septic system. It's currently serviced by a cesspool. That's going to be located over in here. That was part of the redesign. And we have town water, impact on traffic flow and safety. Again, that was a big concern last time with Mouse Hole Lane locating the driveway on this side of the property. We're putting it back over here with sufficient parking off-site. I should have mentioned, when I was discussing this aspect of the project last time, Dan, we discussed Dan proposes to cut back some of the vegetation in terms of height as it gets closer to Barcliff Avenue along Mouse Hole Lane, just because the visual is a bit tough pulling out there, and he still proposes to do that as part of this project today. Nine, noise and litter. We don't believe there are any issues with noise and litter caused by a continued residential use of the property. We have adequate utilities and other public services. And eleven and twelve are not applicable. I've taken enough of your time, so I'll be brief, but I think what we've proposed, we believe, addresses the concerns that were raised last time. I think it's a nice project. I don't think it's too much for the property. I think Dan's really worked hard to try and come up and make changes that address the concerns and fit the neighborhood, and he's worked hard. He's reached out to neighbors. He's provided copies of plans while in advance of hearing. So, you know, I think the effort's been there, and the results, I think, have been achieved with this design. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, indicate you'd like to join the conversation.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a note. This is from Christina Bassett. She writes, on behalf of the Chatham Historical Commission, on August twenty-third, the Chatham Historical Commission, on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, found the home to be historically significant and imposed a six-month demolition delay that is set to expire on October first, twenty twenty-three. The commission did not like the original Gambrel design, so the applicant came back to the commission with a new design to see if the delay could be lifted. The commission decided to uphold the original demolition delay at a June sixth, twenty twenty-three CHC meeting. Then we have an email from Judith Georgie. O'Shea writes, on eight twenty-two, I have reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild. The applicant is proposing a new four-bedroom dwelling and septic system to replace the existing cesspools. Floor plans of the existing dwelling are required to determine the existing Title V flow. No additional flow will be allowed at this property. And then I have a note. This is from Jack Bowman, August twenty-first. He writes, my name is Jack Bowman, and I'm a lifelong Chatham resident. I've watched with keen interest the evolution of the proposal for the construction of the new house at one eighty-four Barcliff Ave. And the collaborative effort between the ZBA, the Building Department, and the builder, Dan Russell. I applaud Mr. Russell and architect David Sargent for this latest rendering, which seamlessly integrates both neighborhood concerns for safety and your committee's thoughtful guidance. Great local governance, a team effort between private and public interests, and this refined plan reflects just that. Barcliff Avenue may have the most unique mix of homes of any street in Chatham, yet it remains a unique charm blending, a sprinkling of antique homes among homes that literally represent styles from every decade, from the fifties to the present. Everyone included or involved should be proud of their thoughtful contributions while to help guide the builder and architect to produce this handsome twenty-five hundred square foot house that will more than comfortably blend into Barcliff Ave's eclectic landscape. I hope you will proudly and enthusiastically endorse this plan. Am I mistaken, or was Mr. Bowman the realtor on this purchase by Mr. Russell?
You are correct.
So the credibility of this sort of a letter is...
Still a resident, Mr. Chairman.
He is all that, and I'm sure he would like Mr. Russell to hire him when he goes to sell the house, too.
Smart move, yeah.
Well, anyway, good try, Mr. Bowman. Then we have a email. This is August twenty-fourth. Let's see. Mandy and Justin Blair, one eight five Barcliff. Thank you for your continued communication regarding the proposed project. We are pleased with the redesign and support it is as an improvement over the existing property. The finished project should fit in nicely with the improvements made all around with the subject property and up and down Barcliff of late. We will certainly want to connect with the developer more specifically on their intended noise, dust, and parking mitigation plans when the timing of the project is ultimately known. They seem to appreciate the impacts of speculative development on seasonal and year-round butters. We appreciate and are counting on the developer's willingness to minimize the disruptions and inconveniences inherent in any redevelopment. And that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone either here or on Microsoft Teams that has a specific question or wishes to speak against this? If so, please indicate you would like to join the conversation.
I just have a couple of questions and comments.
Sure. Ah, yeah. You can't speak from where you are.
Okay, thank you. So I want to thank Mr. Russell, first of all.
Okay.
Oh, my name is Charlene Giggly. And I live at fifteen Mouse Hole Lane.
And the gentleman with you.
I'm sorry?
And the gentleman with you.
Oh, and this is my wonderful groom, Robert.
I was going to write.
Now, you were here before, anyway.
Still going strong.
So the floor is yours. Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I don't want to take much of your time, but I do want to thank Mr. Russell. And I do want to thank the zoning board for all your guidance, as well as your support in what my husband and I raised at the last meeting. Clearly, my concerns were that of safety. And it just really is very comforting to know that there's going to be a fence around the pool and that they moved the driveway. That was very much, it is very much appreciated. So I want to say thank you very, very much. I do have a request, and I'm hoping that it's not going to be an issue. I was wondering for a condition for approval. I'm happy that they're leaving the Mouse Hole Lane hedge. That's very important to Mouse Hole Lane. And thank you for also maintaining it properly as well. That's a concern. The one thing that keeps me up at night, just a quick thing, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a lot to ask, but maybe, you know, you could speak to this. If we could have the plan, the site plan up, it'd be great. I think I used this last time. So the only thing that, since we don't know who will be buying this home, hopefully it'll be a family. It may or may not. They may or may not rent it. It's their right and privilege. My concern is if, in fact, they overburden the lot with parking. Very often, if it's a four-bedroom home, or if they have a party, whatever, people may be tempted to park in this area because there's no sidewalk. It's basically grass that goes right to the street level. So people may be tempted to park here, and I understand that. I understand that. The only thing I would ask is if he could build or put a little, you know, like boulders, an island, a landscape, something like that, that would prevent any cars that may decide to park on the lot here from backing up simultaneously as maybe somebody is coming down Mouse Hole Lane, because the hedge would be a blind spot. So if they're coming down here and backing up simultaneously as people are entering or exiting, you know, Mouse Hole Lane, I think by having just a little bit of a hardscape, you know, again, whether it's an island with a boulder, a stone light post, anything that would just prevent cars from backing up here, I think that would be a huge addition to what could be a line of sight issue behind the hedges. So that's really what I'm asking at this point, if that's something that could be done. We would appreciate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if I could just speak, going back to the site plan, if you wouldn't mind, to the overall magnitude of the structure on a less than ten thousand square foot lot. I know they mentioned briefly the lot neighboring to the east. And this particular lot is a thirty thousand square foot lot. This one exceeds ten thousand square feet. I believe the one across the street is greater than ten thousand square feet. And if we were to walk up and down Barcliff, many of the houses that are on Barcliff are much smaller in nature than what's being proposed here on a larger lot. And I would just, and also the setback of this in comparison to the others. I would just ask the, respectfully ask the board if they could just take that into consideration as you go through your deliberation. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here today that has a specific question or would like to speak against, and also on Microsoft Teams? This is the time where you enter the conversation.
I see no one else to speak.
Okay. Jamie, do you want to answer the questions from that couple?
Sure. It says Dan now. He's happy to do something in terms of hardscaping or whatnot in that area to preclude parking. I don't know if that needs to be a condition necessarily, but, or what exactly that would be, but he's happy to pursue that. He doesn't want people parking in the lot either, and that's certainly fine. In terms of the size, you know, I would just go back to the fact that we're under the building coverage requirement. So no matter the size of the lot, it's a fourteen hundred square foot footprint. It's not a big building. It's under fifteen percent. We meet all the setbacks except for the street, which is already nonconforming. So I don't think, to characterize it as a large structure, I just don't think is accurate. And I think we're two point seven feet below the height requirement, and we're under the building coverage requirement. So from a zoning perspective, I don't think to call it oversized or too large is really appropriate. appropriate.
Hi, Dan Russell, the owner of the property. I don't know why you all assume I'm developing it, but I guess I'm a developer, too. Just to add to what he just said, obviously, the smaller the lot, the harder it is to achieve the 15%. The larger the lot, the easier it is to meet the 15%. Every other approval in the last five years on that street all exceeded 15% on slightly larger lots. So the numbers just don't reflect what people are saying. Okay? Thank you.
So, questions from the board? Lee?
I don't really have any questions. Everything that I was wondering about has been answered, specifically the fence around the pool. So I don't have any questions right now.
Jenny?
So I have a comment and a question. Can I do comments?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I want to say I totally agree, and I thank you, and I acknowledge the changes that you made. You made several. Shifted the garage, that was a big concern of the neighbors and of the chairman. Proposing the fence to the pool was a concern of the neighbors, the Quigleys, and a board member. Lowering the height, that was something that I actually spoke a lot about, was the height, and several other board members as well. And then Mr. Veach talked about maximizing, you know, kind of like, and so you tried to accommodate that with the changes to setbacks. So that's all important, and I really do appreciate that. I talked primarily at the last hearing about two things, height and streetscape. Now, streetscape, we haven't talked about yet in all the things that you did, but you have touched on it, and Mr. Giggly just touched on it, when you gave us in criteria five, neighborhood visual character, including streetscape. Now, a couple of the houses you talked about, Jamie, that were taller, were actually like, and actually, Mr. Bowman's letter talked about the variety of styles of houses on that street, and it's totally true. Anyway, those two taller buildings are, were at one point probably more Greek Revival looking, right, which do tend to be steep and tall. They've been modified over the years, added porches and things like that. But I think where I feel as though, and I want to bring up the fact that I anchored a lot of my comments last time regarding streetscape to the fact that it isn't just any neighborhood in Chatham, it's a historic neighborhood in Chatham, and the house is 1900. Now, I know, I watched the hearing, and I know that you don't totally agree that that house is, and it's been modified, so it doesn't reflect 1900, but it is. And it was deemed by that, in that historical meeting, to be a house with historical significance. So the one issue that I have remaining is the comment that one of the historic representatives mentioned. I want to read it. The proposed house is lovely, and I agree. The proposed house has come a long way. Mr. Russell, you've done a lot. The proposed house is lovely. It could be in Westchester County or California, but not in a neighborhood that is historic. And that is what I would like my question to be, because I think that when you are raising and replacing a 1900 house that has been deemed by the town of Chatham to be historically significant, and to have it fitting in a historic neighborhood, is your proposal attractive? Yes. Is it Cape Cod? No. And that's what I talked about last time. The one area that would be a question of mine would be, and I know you have your architect on the line. I talked about the fact that this proposal had a very vertical orientation, which most of the houses in Barcliff do not have, with the exception of the two that you pointed out, the taller ones. But they're not, they're Capey in that they're Greek Revival, but they're not what, they're not gable-end houses like what Mr. Russell's proposing here. So the height of a gable-end house is what was throwing me the last time. Now, you've reduced the height, and that's great. I'm very appreciative of that. But what would make it more Cape-like would be that shed dormer that the architect, Mr. Sargent, mentioned last time, that he was trying to sort of replicate from the previous home, and which is actually on several of the other gable-end homes. That is not a true shed dormer, because it's not within the roof line. It is the roof line. Is there a way to continue that roof line across the front and have it be a true shed dormer? It would really make the house, then, very much more Cape Cod. Do you see what I'm saying?
Dave can talk, too. If I, for one, is I disagree, there's several historical age houses in Chatham that do not carry the Eevee across the front. Except, I mean, I drove around today, there's several. But in any event...
In Barcliff?
Barcliff, I think there's one or two on Barcliff.
There aren't any?
That, I think there are.
They're very similar to this, but they have the...
Okay, so if you carry it across, and you wind up that your sill does not meet code, a new code. So I think it's 44 inches. I'm trying to do this by memory. But if I bring it across, then I raise the sill of the window to a window that does not meet code as far as getting out of the window. That's the reason for doing that.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I mean, I figured there was a reason.
Right.
And I know that you mentioned at a previous hearing that you were, maybe you didn't use the word developer, but I think you said you were builder, and you build great homes. But what you, and you said, I know...
I mean, I bought the houses, you know, it's in an LLC, but I bought it, Dan and Heidi Russell bought the house. So, you know, I come from a development background. I really haven't decided what I'm gonna do with this.
Well, I'm just saying what you said in a hearing. You said in a hearing, I bought the house, I plan to sell it. That's on tape. So you said that. So that's why I'm going on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And I understand that you know what buyers want, and that's what you're trying to do, is maximize the ability to sell the house.
Sure.
But not at the expense of a historic neighborhood. That's my only point about asking you to...
I understand.
To make it a little more Cape Cod. I did drive through the neighborhood a few times. The only house that has a colonial vertical orientation like that is one that you showed, Jamie. It's not on Barcliff, but it's in the neighborhood. But that's a colonial. It's really not. You have a couple of things here that reference the Cape. You have the wall, the doghouse wall dormer on the left above the garage. That's very Cape Cod. I appreciate that you made a few tweaks, like you changed the stone facade to brick and the foundation. That is more of a historic look. And I noticed that you changed the hoods to more of a shingled flare, I think you call that. Maybe that's not the technical term.
Yeah.
So I see that you're paying attention to that, and that's just why, I'm not expecting you to answer it on the spot, but the vertical orientation, if you go back and listen to the previous hearing, I talked a lot about that because it tied into streetscape. Now, it was more pronounced when the height was at the max.
Right, right.
But, and it's a little hard to tell, to the chairman's point, a 3D model would be easier to see, but that is my, and again, I'm really just going back to historic, because the house was heard at that hearing. I feel as though it's important that we listen to what they say. This is their area. And so when they say pretty unanimously that it is not a Cape Cod house, that's what's troubling me in a historic neighborhood. And when you are raising and replacing a historic home, so...
Okay, just to back up to the historic, again, I understand exactly what you're talking about. This design here, it's a little bit different now because of coming to zoning and making our modifications end zoning. Architecturally, this would have been approved by historic. They just didn't shorten the delay. They were happy with the architecture. I'm not, the second meeting, I went twice. The gable, right, the gable got crushed by them, and they steered us towards...
The Gambrel, you mean?
The Gambrel, I'm sorry. The, and they wanted it more the style of the existing house. This is more the style of the existing house.
Right. I saw that one, too.
Right.
But Janet Tennyson was the woman I referred to.
Sure.
She specifically was talking about this design when she said that comment that I read.
Okay.
I'm just...
Yep. And then if we could show you, do you have the outside? These renderings, these renderings do nothing like to help, because it's not...
Yeah, I know.
What else can I look at? I'm just gonna show you, all of my houses in Chatham are pretty much all the same, the finishes and...
The last photograph I sent you, it's Dan's house on Bridge Street. Let's see, it's, should be, yeah, right here.
Yeah, this is my house on Bridge Street. So I use the shingle that's dipped in cedar oil, and it grays evenly without the black splotches down the side. You know, we do the weave corners with the sweeps.
I think that's very attractive.
And we do, you know, so it's, yeah. And those renderings, those renderings, they're too, like, perfect.
No, no, no. I noticed that. I know exactly what, I don't know what the technical term is. I call it a flare, a shingle flare.
Exactly, right.
But I noticed that, and, you know, we didn't specifically ask for that. We just said, make it more Cape-like. That's what we asked for the last hearing. And I see that we did...
No, 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 I just wanted you to see it finished.
Okay, no, no, I like it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and I see that you made those tweaks. I'm only bringing it up because, Jamie, you mentioned several other things that we talked about, and you checked all those boxes.
Yeah, yeah.
You've done a really nice job with that. But I did talk about streetscape. I'm very passionate about preserving the historical nature of that neighborhood with a house that is on a small lot. I get your point, Jamie. You meet all the criteria. Technically, you do, but it still doesn't mean that we can't ask for, it's in our criteria, streetscape and visual character of the neighborhood. So, sorry, those were a lot of comments and one question, but that's what...
I mean, we tried to, I follow, you know, we tried to...
Well, I would like to ask you to consider that some type of change so that you don't have that vertical orientation, because that was my concern last time, and it's still there.
Can I make a quick call and make sure that, I mean, I'd like to close tonight.
I guess we would get some comments from the rest of the board.
Okay, that's all I have.
What's that? Randy?
Yeah, so thank you. I'll be a lot softer this time. I promise. I think the height is perfect. The setback, you did all you could. I checked with Jay Briggs today, and he confirmed that you couldn't really push the house back any further. So I'm satisfied with that. You put the fence around the pool. You made that couple very happy. It's all great. And you moved the garage over for safety. Perfect. But I have to agree with Ginny that we did talk about the historic nature last time, and I'll quote my colleague, Lee. She talked about Capey, and that it wasn't Capey, and this is her neighborhood. So you're almost there. And the way I look at it is, I wonder, and I will ask a question. Why can't you make that doghouse dormer on the garage a usual doghouse dormer? It's not. It looks a little modified. And then the other is, I agree with the shed dormer not really being a traditional shed dormer. If those two changes were made, and they're close to what you have, and I know, I understand that with not maybe historically talk, we don't usually talk about design, but in this case, I think, given that it's been agreed upon, that it's a historic neighborhood, and we have provisions, which I'll go over later, that do support consideration about the historical nature of the neighborhood. I'm wondering if you could possibly make those two changes to those shed dormer and the doghouse dormer, and then it would be a lot less of a mass in front of, you know, on the street, because it wouldn't be as boxy as it is now.
Sarah, would you mind putting up the elevation just on the front, so I could make sure I understand the comment?
Do you have the pointer?
Yeah. It's right there. So in terms of the, setting aside the doghouse dormer for a second, so the main dormer, folks want that, I thought I heard Jenny say extended or reduced in terms of...
Well, it would be, I think what she's talking about is making it a traditional shed dormer versus the, it's almost like a faux shed dormer right now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this is what she's talking about. It's not working. Yeah, she's talking about the two Es on the end.
There you go.
She's talking about continuing those...
Right.
Across the house, and like I explained...
Oh, these.
I'm trying to get this answered now, so I could appease everybody. That just shortens up those windows in the second-floor bedrooms, so it makes them higher and smaller.
And that's a simple Cape Cod look.
No, but I'm saying there's a code of the height.
For egress, if I may.
For egress purposes.
Dan, if you had to go to the microphone.
Sorry, there's a code for the height, for the egress purposes, that I go over if I do that style of design. That's why you see a lot of the replicated capes this style is because of that issue on the second floor, if that makes sense.
You brought up 209 as a good comparison, and they have that.
Ah, yeah.
They do, if you want to look at it...
I don't know exactly what they did.
No, but if you look at that...
I'm trying to get it answered right now.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much. That's kind of my question. Could you do that?
Okay.
So you're saying something like this on the front?
No, no, it's not like, no, go back.
That's 209.
Yeah, that's different. That's individual shed dormers. I'll show you what she's talking about. I wish the point, does the point work?
Yeah, you just gotta...
Okay.
So I got it. You hit this.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, hit that, I'm sorry.
That's what it looks like.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, go, okay, yep, go back to the, yeah, I'll make sure everybody's clear on exactly what it all looked like. Go back to the other one, the...
Oh, sorry, Sarah, if you could do elevation for our project.
Sorry, sorry about that. Okay, so she wants, can you continue that straight across? I just have to make sure I can do that and still achieve code for the egress of the windows, especially since they're bedrooms.
So if I may jump in here?
Please do.
Mr. Chair. So the windows on either side of the center are bathrooms, so those don't, those aren't required to have egress windows? It's just the double window on the front?
Right.
That, those are the only windows in the bedroom on that second floor, I believe, and those would require at least one egress window within 44 inches of the floor.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna make a quick phone call, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna do that, and I'll keep, yeah.
So Jay, using what you just said, how would that affect what Ginny has described she would like to see?
That's a good question for the architect to answer that. I mean, as long as the window's within 44 inches of the floor, which we have in every single bedroom in every new house under construction, I would think it would be a possibility.
Okay. Okay, okay.
And so I just want to say that that's what would make this look like a less mass on the street, if it was a historic house, because right now, I think the difference is between substantially detrimental and detrimental. Given the size of this house, and it's, the living space is about 40% more, it's got a big mass, right?
Much bigger, yeah.
So that's, that makes it detrimental. But it makes it more substantially detrimental when it's not broken up and it's not historic in a historic neighborhood. So I think that would get you in, if you made it look more historic.
Okay. Yeah, Dan's gonna try to get some answers.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Paul, have any questions?
We've had a lot of questions.
Good.
Let me go to a different issue, and the parking, the way you've set up the parking now.
Mm-hmm.
How many spaces are there?
You have one in the garage, and then probably one behind, and then you could have one or two off to the side, maybe one off to the side, so a total of three.
So are you talking about one in the garage, one in the driveway in front of the garage, and three in the area to the left?
Oh, I don't think you'd fit three cars on the one to the left. Probably a total of three or four spots.
Two there, okay. And then in terms of parking on the right-hand side of the building, I understand there And then in terms of parking on the right-hand side of the building, I understand there is some concern from neighbors about the line of sight and the hedges, but what I'm wondering is at one point we were talking about low wall or something of that nature so that you couldn't drive in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, you couldn't park there at all. Is that still on the table?
Well, I think, my understanding of the concern last hearing was that placing the driveway over there was going to encourage folks to then park on the lawn, but.
That was, that was one of the concerns.
Now that we've moved the driveway, I would think that would not have the same encouragement for parking there, but that being said, Dan's okay with doing some sort of hardscape feature in that lawn area so you can't pull cars past the front in order to park to the side of the house.
So that you can't park on the right-hand side?
So that you cannot, that's correct.
Okay. And then I was a little unclear about what you were saying about the hedge. At one point you were saying that you still intend to trim the hedge, but one of the neighbors was talking about how the hedge was going to continue to remain, so I'm a little unclear there.
The plan is to keep it, but to cut back some of the height as it gets closer to mouse hole because it really gets in the sightline if you're pulling out with a car.
Okay.
With the goal of improving the safety.
At that point, what you're doing is improving the line of sight from mousetrap.
Yes.
Or mouse hole, rather. I'm sorry.
It might be, I don't know.
But it really is not affecting the line of sight really from the driveway coming from the house.
No, I think our line of sight from the driveway is perfectly clear and basically in the same location as currently. It's just helping the folks on mouse hole pulling out, so.
Okay.
And Paul, Sarah has a comment on that.
So, if they were to do any landscape walls or anything within that area, just make sure, because we do have the corner lot visual clearance section of the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
It couldn't exceed two and a half feet with a diagonal line, 25 feet going from property line to property line.
So, basically in this area, we just have to keep it under, yep.
Right.
And that goes for hedges, too.
Okay.
But that would still accomplish your purpose of not allowing parking in that whole side of the house.
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And the septic placement now is going to be on the left-hand side of the house?
We had to move it because it, in order to meet the setbacks, it has to match the drive, the garage side of the house.
Right, okay. And as I understand it, from the input from Jay, you don't have an option of moving the house further back from the front.
Not with the pool.
Avenue, given the setback that you have to meet in the rear, is that the issue?
No, we could, you could move it back if, you know, candidly, if there's no pool, you could go further back.
Right.
But with the pool, you have, the pool has to be set back 25 feet and you have to have a certain setback from the pool to the house.
Right.
So, removing the pool, you could push it further back. I don't think you'd meet the setback necessarily, but you could gain some, some footage.
So, does that, does that present an option for you different from redesigning the house by moving it back further away from the road so that it is not?
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, I just spoke to the architect, sorry if I'm jumping around a little bit. He, he said it's extremely tough to meet the 44-inch with the, you know, the locations of the windows now and that center window, but in any event, yeah, we spoke, I mean, I would, I would do a trade-off of eliminating the pool and keeping the design. So, push it back, you know, how many feet do you think would?
All right, so you've lost me there. Are you saying that the architect is saying it would be very difficult to?
Very difficult to bring that eve all the way across. Yes, I do have another alternative design that he did today because we did hear some rumblings about the shed dormer and if I could pass these around, can I pass them around?
Yeah.
This.
Actually, if you give it, oh, well.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say.
Could you email it to us quickly so?
Email, yeah.
I have it in email, I can do that.
Yeah, can you email it? But in any event, but in any event, it's a, it's a smaller shed dormer, again, like a lot of houses in Chatham, which do not have the eve going across, but they have a smaller shed dormer. You'll see it, it's, it's, it makes the house from the front look very different, so just see if you like that.
Mr. Chair, if I could hop in again just for one second.
Please.
It appears it's about a three-foot knee wall on the second floor, so the primary roof of that structure is elevated, so that's what will probably cause the problem of running that rake all the way across, soffit all the way across. If that roof came down onto the plate or a shorter knee wall, they might be able to achieve the 44 inches necessary.
Thank you.
I'm beginning to feel that we're designing this a little bit on the fly here and.
Well, I just, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm trying.
A little uncomfortable with that concept.
I'm trying to keep things moving, I mean.
I understand, I understand you're trying to do that, but at the same time, you're subject to a demolition delay until October anyhow.
Oh, I'm not, oh, I'm not gonna be able to start before October, I mean, I have to, I have to design the house.
I'm wondering whether you want to give consideration to the comments that you've heard and then come back with a proposal which you think would comply with those comments and at the same time you would feel comfortable in proposing.
I, I think it might be helpful if we could allow, step back, allow the next presentation to go forward, we could come back if we, at the end of the meeting, just to give us 15 minutes to sort of regain, recoup, regroup, excuse me, and speak to Dave Sargent and figure out the best path forward, if that makes sense.
I don't think we got an answer on the doghouse dormer on the garage, whether it would be, if that's still something you could change, but just wanna, you can come back with that.
So, consider that, too.
Sure.
Okay.
So, do what, do what with it, just make it a regular dorm?
Regular, I guess there's a concern that it doesn't look like a traditional doghouse dormer, but we can ask Dave Sargent that question during our break here.
Okay, okay. So, we'll adjourn this hearing until the end of the next hearing.
Thank you very much.
How's that?
That's perfect, thank you.
We need a vote on that, I suppose, Paul.
All right, I'll move to adjourn this hearing until the end of the next hearing.
All right.
Second.
Ginny?
I say yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, pretty paper. Robbie paper. Thank you, yeah, yeah.
Application number 23-073, David Dimadris and Giselle Limantani, Carib William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Trenham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 107 Secuance Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 8D Block 7, Lot R10. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and it is located 20.5 feet from Geranium Drive. The proposed additions will be non-conforming and that they will be located 6.8 feet from Geranium Drive where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,019 square feet, 19 point, or 9.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,670 square feet, 14.9% or 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming and that it contains 11,187 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of David Ministeris and Giselle Limantani, who are in the rear here with a couple of their supportive neighbors in regard to the property at 107 Secuance. David and Giselle live diagonally across the street at 114 Secuance. They've owned that house for about 20 years and have lived here year-round for nine or 10, and they, like their neighbors, have watched the existing house on this property deteriorate for a long time. Not a lot good had happened to the house, if not an eyesore, certainly not in keeping with what is in the neighborhood. And when it came on the market, just about a year ago at this time, they contacted me to get involved in their purchase of it with a goal of renovating it and turning it into something it was designed to be, a better version of it, which is a year-round home. I admit, Mr. Chairman, that I was involved in the purchase, but I did not enlist any brokers to write on our behalf. I thought one was sufficient for hearing in that regard. But what, what we could have generated and didn't was probably 20 neighbors from virtually everybody in the neighborhood in support because even if you don't particularly like what's proposed and you're not gonna redesign it like you're not gonna do with 184 Barcliff, the issue is whether it's substantially more detrimental. And given what's there now, I think I have a relatively low hurdle because what is there now is not an elegant home. But instead, David and Giselle decided not to tear down the existing house, frankly for economic reasons, but to add to it a garage which was originally planned for the house, the so-called patio there on the northeast corner. The concrete patio was the foundation for a garage that was never built, and they would also like to renovate the interior and put on a second story over a portion of the house. The problem that we have is that on the north side, thank you, sir, if you go back to site plan for just a second, the problem that we have is that Geranium Drive on the north side of that site plan is, that portion of it is a paper street. It was laid out in 1956, it has never been built. Most people in the neighborhood didn't know it existed. The immediate abutters to the north, who are most impacted by it, weren't aware that it's a paper road. The people at 16 Secuance in the rear have some reservations about it being constructed because it would enter into their garage, so it is never gonna be built, but it is nonetheless a paper street. We're already too close to it. We're supposed to be 25 feet from it and we're 20.5 feet from it. We propose to be 6.8 feet from it and no one cares. It is absolutely not in compliance with the bylaw, but to do this, we need a special permit from you, and I think that you can find as part of the issuance of that special permit that there is no detriment to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, or anyone else by changing that encroachment. I'll, I'll give Mr. Norcross and his architects as much time as I can, but I won't dwell forever and I'll instead go.
Don't give them all that much, thank you very much.
I'll instead go into the criteria and, Sarah, now the house plans would be appreciated. As to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, all but one lot in the neighborhood is non-conforming. The only one that is non-conforming is the one that David and Giselle owned diagonally across the street. The existing house is quite small, on a parcel of average size, it is non-conforming only as to the existing paper street setback. If you approve the special permit, you can do so based on the finding the site remains adequate for the renovations and the additions. Except for the paper street setback, we do meet coverage and the primary street and sideline requirements. As to compatibility of size, there is on the third page of the handout, the comparison to a number of other houses in the neighborhood. We currently have the existing inelegant house, which is the second smallest in the area with a footprint of just 864 square feet. If you approve the special permit, I think you can do so based on the finding that at 1,670 square feet, coverage remains compatible, as is mass. Most of the houses in the neighborhood are one and a half or one and three-quarter stories. This is only partially on the left-hand side, a one and three-quarter story house. It's an obvious change of what's there now, but it's still consistent with only 1,800 square feet of living area. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, obviously we're going closer to that secondary street on the north, which again, which is and will remain unbuilt. As to suitability of the site, it is a typical residential neighborhood, there are no environmental issues except for the impact of what's there now on the neighborhood environment, that's not overly positive. You can prove the special permit based on the finding that there is no impact, no negative impact on the natural environment, but replacement of the existing cesspool and installation of a Title V will certainly be an environmental gain, as will creation of a house and a yard in keeping with the surroundings. David and Giselle aren't developers per se, they are neighbors and they have, not that it's a criteria for you, but they already have somebody planned who is going to move in on a year-round rental basis, so that I think is a positive thing for the neighborhood. As to scale, sighting, mass, views and vistas, the existing structure is somewhat dilapidated, it's inconsistent with and something of an eyesore for the neighborhood, it itself has a negative effect on views and vistas, but if you approve the special permit, while what is proposed is plainly larger, the scale remains appropriate with the gable end on the south side and the garage at the north. It will have a positive impact on the streetscape and to the degree applicable on neighborhood views and vistas. As to compatibility of use, we have nominally now a residential use that will continue on, but it will become an actual year-round use. As to adequacy of sewage and water, we currently have a cesspool, we received permission from the Board of Health when we purchased it, provided we would go forward and install a Title V, which we are going to do. The health agent has written a comment which the chair will read, there's no change in the number of bedrooms, and again, the Title V will be an improvement. The other criteria, traffic flow and safety, noise and litter and so forth are not at issue. The question, as you know, is whether this proposed house with an addition with greater but still consistent living area is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure on a non-conforming lot. The proposed addition is plainly closer to the paper street, but the northerly abutter at 91 Secuance, as well as those to the rear or west at 15 and 16 Seastrend, who are the only people who could care in the least, have written in favor of this proposal. They all understand, as I think you do, that the paper extension of Geranium Drive is laid out in 1956 and an old Earl Ruddock subdivision plan will never be built. So, given the impact on the neighborhood of the current structure against which this must be compared, virtually anything would be an improvement and certainly not substantially more detrimental. But the design of the proposed house incorporating the existing structure with a one-car garage is compatible with the surroundings and will be a marked improvement. It also has the enthusiastic support of the neighborhood as a whole. We even have a couple of abutters who have remained here to speak in favor of this proposal. So, in light of the criteria and the plans in this location, especially in comparison to what's been a neighborhood, something of a neighborhood problem for quite some time, I think that you can find that the proposed additions and the renovated house are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here today that wishes to speak in favor? If so, please indicate you'd like to speak. Lady in the back. If you're both gonna speak, give us your names, please.
My name is Jane Wilson and I live on 6 Geranium Drive. We are the people that look straight at that house all the time.
And the gentleman with you?
My husband, Tom Wilson.
Okay.
He's a better public speaker, so I'm gonna defer to him.
Well, you're doing just fine, that's quite all right. So, go ahead.
All right. The proposed renovation will enhance the property. It'll enhance the character of the neighborhood. It fits in with the neighborhood quite well, and we strongly support Giselle and Dave's request for a special permit.
Thank you very much.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here today who would like to speak in favor? How about on Microsoft Teams, Sarah?
Yes, hi, this is Paul Johnston. I'm a neighbor of David and Giselle and would like to speak as well.
Very well.
So, I'm the, I'm the owner of 17 Geranium Drive, which is essentially on the other side of the, we're on the other side of David and Giselle. We've lived there for 10 years, so 107 Secuance is essentially around the corner from where we live. Clearly, you know, as Bill said, the house needs to be updated. Currently, it's a bit of an eyesore, so it just needs a significant update. And I have reviewed the plans that David and Giselle have, and I'm very much in support of the initiative to update the house and bring it up to par with all the other nice homes in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak?
Marilyn Rosenberg would like to speak.
Marilyn Rosenberg.
Hello, this is Marilyn Barry Rosenberg. We live at 115 Secuance Road, which is next door to the house in question. We're strongly in favor of the proposed changes at 107. We bought our house at 115 Secuance a little under two years ago. As we were considering the purchase of the house, the condition of 107 was a big negative as we, as we considered this purchase. We would very, very much like improvements to 107. It's, it's been a worry since we moved in.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else out there who would like to speak?
I see no one else that would like to speak.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence first. Judith Giorgio, Town of Chatham Health Agent says on 8/15, "I have reviewed the plan to renovate. The plan as proposed does not add septic flow. The plan calls for the existing cesspools to be abandoned and replaced with a Title V septic. The plan as presented is acceptable to the Health Division. Septic plans and application must be made to the Health Division prior to." Septic plans and application must be made to the Health Division prior to sign off on a building permit." And then there's a number of folks, and we've already heard from a couple, that have written in support, and I'm simply going to highlight the key to what they're saying. The first is from Paul Jahane Johnson, 17 Geranium Drive. And they essentially say, "A tremendous addition." And then we have David Burns, and let's see. David Burns, and there's another Burns. Must be Mrs. Burns, and they write. And they write in, and they essentially say on August 20th, they say, "Entirely appropriate project." Then we have Tom and Jane Wilson. We've just heard from them, and the gist of it was, "The proposed renovation will enhance the property, the character of our neighborhood, and what we look at on a daily basis." 6 Geranium Drive. And on August 5th, we heard from Robert Bergman and John Bergman, and they wrote, "Which will have no negative consequences for our neighborhood." They're fully in support. And then Mary Beth Elliott at 16 Secuance Lane writes, "The proposed modifications are in keeping with the neighborhood and will in no way be detrimental." And then we heard from the couple we just saw, Barry and Marilyn Rosenberg, 115 Secuance Road, and they wrote, "And certainly not in any way detrimental to the neighborhood." That was on August 13. And then we also heard from Mike and Kathy Breslin of 91 Secuance Road, and they wrote, "For the benefit of our neighborhood and the Town of Chatham, we approve the renovation plan." So that's a little synopsis, and that's probably a good thing. Okay. So is there anyone here today on Microsoft Teams that would like to ask a specific question or would like to speak against this application? If so, indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no opposition or with a question.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board. Randy.
I don't have any questions.
Paul.
I would just ask, Bill, can you explain what a paper street is for the purpose of our audience? Certainly. A paper street is something that is laid out on a plan approved under the subdivision control road, which shows... Control law, which shows a road. In this case, the developer, back in 1956, I think, thought that someday Geranium Drive would continue over to the east to what is now Secuance. It didn't happen. The paper road allowed for a further expansion of the subdivision, but that never occurred. Secuance was developed otherwise. So it's a dead end. It goes nowhere, and no one uses it, and you saw the trees and the telephone pole in the middle of it. It's just going to sit there. Who owns the land? Interestingly, the... Under something called the derelict fee statute, lawyer to lawyer, you appreciate this, Massachusetts has a statute which prevents a lack of certainty. Absent an intent by the developer to the contrary, then the abutters each own the fee, the underlying ownership, to the center line of the road. But it can't be used for lot or setback coverage purposes. Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Lee.
No questions.
Jenny.
No questions.
Neither do I.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Vote, please, Jenny.
I vote yes.
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 And yes. Liberations. Lee.
Well, I think this is a great improvement, obviously, to the neighborhood. I'm glad to know what a paper road is. I've never heard that term before, but I think it meets all of our criteria, and I think it will be absolutely beneficial to the neighborhood.
Jenny.
So I wanted to comment. Dave mentioned that he read the synopsis of the letters that the neighbors wrote in, and I just want to assure you that we all get them ahead of time, and we all read them thoroughly. So thank you for all those comments. And I have never seen such exuberance on behalf of neighbors. It's an absolutely lovely neighborhood. I really like what you've proposed, and I feel like it meets our criteria, and in fact, it's a substantial improvement, not a detriment.
Well, Mr. Litchfield wrote all the letters, but he was smart enough to change the tone as he went from one to the other.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a section in our bylaw that we often don't quote that I think is applicable to this, and it's Section 5 that we are under here, nonconforming large building and uses. And it says, "The provision of this section is intended to achieve the following objectives in conjunction with the proposed changes." And number three is to reduce or minimize existing adverse impacts on neighboring property. So in addition to the fact that you meet all the criteria, that's why these... That's part of why these criteria even exist. There's two others that we'll save for another time. So I think it's great, and the only one that'll be disappointed about this are probably the animals that have borrowed under it. So, thank you.
They'll find a new home, don't you think? Paul.
I agree with all the comments of my colleagues.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. Is there any need for some conditions on this? I don't think so. Given the location, I don't see a need for it, so I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Need a vote? Jenny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
I vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous vote. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
So we need a vote to go back into 23-070.
I will move to resume the hearing on 23-70, 184 Barcliff Avenue.
Second.
Need a vote? Jenny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, gentlemen.
Great, thank you very much.
What do you got?
Thank you very much for the time. That was helpful for us to be able to speak to Dave Sargent. Sarah, if you don't mind pulling up the front elevation, please. Must be getting kicked out soon, I guess. Oh, I'm just kidding. So I can speak to the dog-eared dormers, since that's a little bit easier. Randy, you were saying it doesn't look traditional. Are you referring to sort of the flares on the side?
No, that it's not really embedded in the roofline.
I think it is.
You think it is?
Yeah, if we could go to one of the side elevations, it might be easier to see.
Okay.
Other one?
Yeah. Go to the other side, the non-chimney side, right? Right there.
So that's it?
That's it.
Right here?
There's something about it, and I'm no expert, you know?
Okay.
I enjoy learning new things, and I've been looking into these type of topics. And it just looks a little different. Maybe Jenny would know, because she's more of...
I think it's because it comes down in front.
Right.
You know, as opposed to, oh, well, here's the gutter, you know? I think it's just, you know, perspective. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so, I mean, we'll certainly look at that. I think it is traditional. It just might be the rendering makes it look a little bit different. And then, Dan, if you want to speak to what you were able to glean from Dave Sargent.
Sure, so kind of what Jay explained, I can steepen that roof, lower it enough to accommodate the windows on the second floor. The house may shrink a little bit on the second floor, and it's hard to tell that now, but that really shouldn't bother you, I wouldn't think. So the answer on that would be yes, I can continue the eve across. It's hard to tell, you know? I mean, it's hard to tell the exact square footage that's going to affect right now. You just... You couldn't do it that quickly. I tried to get them to.
So you can shrink it, but it is your intention to, is that correct? Should this be approved?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's hard to, you know, to do the math right now. But, yeah, yeah, I know I'm going to do a continuous, going to do exactly what Virginia wants.
Okay. So it's going to be... My question to Sarah is, at what point do changes in what's presented to us really need to be resubmitted before we vote?
I mean, it's...
Sometimes there are things we can just X out, and sometimes we can't.
I mean, if you put continuous eve, you know, certainly Jay's going to see the drawings. He's going to see the construction drawings. If it's not a continuous eve, he's going to flag it.
The concern is with our decision letters, we reference a specific plan, so that way, you know, I'm going to reference a plan dated such-and-such by this designer. It won't be the same plan.
So that makes me think that what we should do is we'll go around and see how everybody feels about the whole plan, okay?
Sure.
And then I would suggest that you ask for a continuance, and we'll put you on as soon as possible, so you can come back with a new plan, so we can vote on it. If we won't discuss it again, we'll vote on it.
Sure, that'd be great. If we could sneak on to one of the earlier meetings.
Right, right. It won't be, it won't be.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sure.
So let's go with how we... In deliberations, we were in deliberations. So Paul, with that change...
Well, I think that change along with the other changes that have been proposed, because they've done a good job of trying to respond to the board's comments, I think we could, with a new plan and with the provision with respect to the parking on the right-hand side, we can probably go ahead and deal with it just on a plan basis, yes.
Okay. And the parking on the right-hand side, is that a condition you're going to make?
Well, I was thinking of a condition, because I think that we're talking about a small wall or something along that line.
Deterrent. I'd call it a deterrent, yeah.
Pardon me?
A deterrent. I've had it in decisions before. It says a deterrent.
Something along those lines, so that there's no parking on the right-hand side.
So you two are satisfied with whatever condition Paul comes up with?
Yeah.
Now, that's a loaded question.
There will be room for the statue of me.
We could probably get Dave Clark to put something on, just get something on site plan before we got to come back.
I mean, thank you.
I'm sure Paul's condition will be perfectly fine.
Okay. He likes to have his dog beside him with a bronze, okay? All right.
I'm pro-dog.
So I agree with everyone. You guys have done a really good job, listening to everybody and making, you know, a lot of good alterations. I personally love the look of a real shed, traditional shed dormer as well, and I think it would fit beautifully in this neighborhood. As far as the parking situation, that might need to be included in the new plan, the new site plan, the new design. So I would look forward to seeing the redesign.
Jenny.
Thank you for that. I... For listening to the neighbors, listening to the board, you've incorporated so many changes. It's for the better of everyone, it's better for the Town of Chatham, and certainly the neighborhood. And I think it's important that we honored what we heard from historic. It wasn't just me. This wasn't just my opinion on design. I think Paul brings up a good point about parking. Thank you for looking into that. I actually really love the eve going across. What I call a traditional shed dormer will make it more authentic Cape. I'm not... I don't mind the wall. I call that a doghouse wall dormer, and I think the wall dormer actually...
I think they look good.
Yeah. I like them, too. They're more... A little more unusual, but that doesn't mean that they're not traditional.
I mean, they're more expensive. It's like a simple dormer.
Yeah, and what I like, though, is that now that you're carrying the eve across the body of the house, that will stand out even more. And just see what I mean? Because I think if you hold it up within, like a... Like within the roofline, then it would almost be too much horizontal, if you will. So I don't... I like the wall dormer, doghouse dormer personally, but that's, you know, not my call. And I appreciate you very much talking to David Sargent about the making it a true shed dormer.
No problem.
There are at least three other houses on the street that have that. I'm not saying you need to build an identical house to theirs, and this isn't, but that will help it be... That will help the streetscape, which is our criteria. So thank you.
No problem.
Randy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I agree that will help the mass, and I think you've been great to work with, and this is probably, you know, an example of how this process should go. So I appreciate that. And in the event you do sell it, I think you'll get a better buyer that has an appreciation for what a Cape Cod house looks like in a historic neighborhood, rather than someone that just wants to buy like this big house. And they'll probably get along a lot better with the neighbors, too, if they have that appreciation.
Yeah.
So it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would request a continuance, I guess, to your next available meeting.
So that'll be September 14th.
Yeah, we'll do it. Our next meeting is September 14th, and we can fix you on it.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, Paul.
I'll move to grant the request of continuance to September 14th.
Second.
Vote, Jenny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
I vote yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
I don't think we have anything else, so motion to adjourn, please.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Jenny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And yes. And Sarah, the official time is?
5:01.
Excellent.
Good night, Cape Cod.
Yes, thank you.